President, President Powell, I do not have any public members at my site this morning. So no one is here to give public comments. Will do.
Do not see any at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we have one discussion item on our agenda. As this is a session, there will be no action taken on that, on anything. So today's item of study is the fiscal year 2024 proposed operating budget and forecast. And Rick, I think you're going to take this.
Good morning, President, all members of the board here in the bar. As you know, we're here to discuss the next year's budget, those rates, which I'm sure is everybody's most interested in, interested topic. The hope today, getting into the goals really, although there are probably ten to twenty thousand lines of data that make up the things behind the presentation. Our goal is to make sure that we are covering really major driving factors behind what's changing the budget, what comprises of, and then certainly what's driving the proposed rates for next year and in the forecast. And really, at the end of this, a big element of this presentation is looking at some options, policy-driven options, reserve use and otherwise with things like allocated property tax. And although we're not taking any action at level of board direction at this point, certainly on which things to bring back would be very appreciated. And so, and then finally, make sure that any questions that you have or requested get brought up so we can get them to you. So agenda-wise, quite a few things, and hopefully it wasn't too intimidating to see forty-six or forty-seven slides here in the presentation. But most of these are for reference or for visual indicators and promise it won't take too long to get through them. But overall, wanted to touch a little bit on budget process. I'm not sure that that's been covered so well in the past, at least, you know, what it takes to put this together and what's driving each piece. Really then going into the overview of district-wide, how is the budget looking? And what's driving that? And then there are two really key components to get into a little bit more detail. Things that which we tend to have more discretion on, at least either overall or individual departments, things like salaries, benefits and supply services. Obviously, we do things on a per-fund basis. Our rates are driven on a per-fund basis. And so looking at snapshots of each fund to get into what's driving each one. And then we'd be remiss not to talk about revenues, specifically those larger revenues like property taxes or investment income that help offset our need to increase rates in the future. So what's happening there? And then lastly, rounding out, what are those proposed rate increases? What does that look like for average bill impacts? And then getting into options, which we've been discussing a little bit, as well as if we didn't raise rates at all, what does that, what does that look like? And so good to have. And the last, just next steps and make a readdress your questions. So budget process. It's been a fairly intensive process so far, just to characterize it. January and February is all about meeting with the departments and then each department and the individual divisions that make it up, putting together their proposed budgets and they get that finance usually by the end of February, being in March, and we turn around, review that, and then sit down with GM and then review it at the GM level. And then immediately turn around, and that's what happened this year, to get it to you in summary form, especially with where we thought rates were going. So you had that within a matter of about a week of us having final budget data. And then obviously, we did have the GWPA C meeting, so trying to bring the highlights on what's going on the East Rack side for public review. And then really the, and we'll get into more detail later, but the next steps beyond doing the comprehensive overview of the budget today are next month focusing on the state water project funds. Obviously, that fund makes up a tremendous, a large part of our budget, but it doesn't impact water rates. And so, and in a year like this year where hydrology is changing and we're getting updated information, seems about a minute. We wanted to have the latest rate as to you before we started really getting into into details there. So you'll have placeholder numbers in what you've seen today, but expect those to change for the water project fund. So a fairly busy slide here, but but overall, just wanted to touch on. So the way that this budget is built, largely if I can say, is how do we maintain service levels? This is what every department's operating under as they've put together. How do we continue to provide service while having the least possible budget impact or or ask to it? So you might say status quo, but it's really driven by service levels. And then adding in those things which we have to do, which is a big part of our business, regulatory compliance, other sorts of things. And so adding those elements in, whether that be air quality control board, whether that be water quality standards, anything else new we need to comply with. And then as we discuss as a district with board, any strategic initiatives that the board wants to see. And so how to maintain service levels, what new do we have to do, and then making sure that we're addressing strategic priorities. And then throughout it, how do we do that efficiently? So if there are CIP projects or other initiatives we take to try and save money in the process to mitigate the rate increases, we'll do that. So all that boiling down to really a little different approaches with two big elements of the budget. Revenues, we we build from scratch every year, but that's based largely on trend analysis. What does it look like in the past? What do we know that's different going forward? What are the grants coming in? How is consumption changing with conservation? All of those sorts of things. But on expenses side, we largely take what's happened in the past as baseline and then look at those major changes for the future. So if we need to do something new, that's baked in regulatory compliance, as well as if we're pulling back on something, either we got done with a strategic initiative or something along those lines, that's all reflected in the expenses. But you do have some major categories that go into the budget. Each department has a different role to play in greater degrees. For instance, salaries and benefits is largely driven by finance and human resources. We'll draft that for departments based on what we know. But supplies and services is equal input from every department and what they need. Utilities is largely driven by operations now. Water purchases, Robert's team and finance work really closely on projecting the future. Obviously, those are big dollars that swing year to year based on contracts, agreements, ideology, all sorts of things. Capital projects is driven by engineering with support from finance and revenues between Robert's area and finance, which should put those together with data. So all of this gets reviewed by Jim and then goes through the process if you want. So just just to highlight. So the different pieces of the budget, I mean, we've got eight different primary departments and over a hundred individual divisions, operating units, supervisors, managers, each with different focuses, all all pouring data up into an overall budget. But then you have to make sure that that, those expenses are allocated for fund. And so this is just to give the the sense of it takes quite a bit of work to get to the the full budget. So what does that look like? We obviously gave preliminary numbers last, the last session, building rate forecast. The rates haven't changed in what we're proposing, but there have been some updates to the numbers. So you see numbers look different here, so everything that's that's changed, just to be transparent about that. And there are some big, big changes even since last month. The first thing, we have my data on where we are this year with projections. And so that impacts where we think serves will end, which impacts how much we think we have available to spend and revenues on interest earnings and things like that. So all that's been updated. The big one, which is good news, is the state water project. We went from a thirty-five percent allocation to seventy-five percent and hopefully maybe a hundred percent here. But that that even as a placeholder in the budget is over twelve million dollars of an increase that you'll see reflected.
Are you going to model the hundred percent?
And we'll see what we hear by early next month and then we'll at least have it as as what the difference would be as a contingent.
Extra is probably extra three or four million dollars, something like that.
In that range.
It's so, it's significant, it's not going to.
Yeah, it's it's that volume at transportation rate. It's ranging out of two-twenty to two-fifty dollars an acre foot for whatever the extra, extra is.
I don't want to jink it. It could be as much as five million, yeah. All right, just curious kind of the magnitude of what that would be. That would be max, but projecting over the next five years, we're certainly not going to use that same number.
No, no. Now, you'll you'll see, and we'll get into this more next month, but trying to do a balancing act with the tax rate as an annual revenue and then leveraging reserves and how much we should have in reserves with policies to try and and recognize we didn't expect seventy-five, certainly in a hundred percent year this year. It comes with extra expenses, which are all good news of what we're getting out of it. But it's sometimes better just to have the money set aside for when those things happen rather than building into the tax rate. And so we'll go over that in more detail next, next month. The other thing is we were initially expecting not to get any more Rodeo Real Bravo water, certainly with hydrology the last few years and what they were able to do. It's a miracle year and that's changed with our last meeting with them. And so, so that's an extra ninety-five hundred acres we're expecting to get next year. But it comes with a seven-point-six million dollar price tag and that hits West Rack. The proposal to the board, given that we, at this point, don't have enough data to know whether this is going to continue and at what degree we'll be able to have water in the future. So is this a recurring expense? If so, what degree and need to have reoccurring revenues to match up with it? We don't know that yet, so I think we need our proposals to wait another year to get more information. And so for now, it's use reserves out of the West Rack. So we can confidently say that we're using reserves to help lower rates because that would impact both West Rack rate and domestic rate. And I'll give more detail on that later, but at a significant amount, almost a million dollars. And then we didn't get some last-minute updates on a few things relating to supplies and services. And so there's a little over an extra half million in there from what we presented before. But it's a hodgepodge of things, everything from what we see is grant subsidiary expenses, so not expenses of district, but the pass-through expenses for grants. We have a new strategy for OPEB, which actually reduces expenses. And then it's still tentative, but we'll have it in the budget, what might happen with the newly sewn whitewater if that affects her. And so, and then lastly, we have updated data on pumping, so we updated replenishment expenses. Any questions at this phase of things before we get to the numbers? So what what things look like, all in, all funds with with the budget? And so there is, I think, a good news story here. You just look year to year, you're looking at six, six percent higher, but there's a lot of big swings that we just talked about, which I think cloud the picture on what what's really going on in the budget. So if you include the state water project, which is a very large part of this budget, but it doesn't impact rates, and you exclude the influence of really high budget year this year for turf rebates that are funded by drought penalties like normal water rates, and you exclude the Real Bravo water, which is maybe one time, it may be ongoing, but it's certainly it's a major difference between year to year, you're really looking at a five-point-four percent budget decrease when you exclude those those large things, which either are anomalies or they don't affect the rate. And you line that up with the headline news this week of five-point-six percent Corsi die increase. We're we're right in line with inflationary increases. So if no other slide is helpful in the whole thing, I hope this one is. It took a while to go through all the data and go, what what's really going on here in each of the funds? And so the the news here is both domestic and sanitation are larger by just inflation. That inflation both on salary side, it's inflation, certainly on chemical side, those funds are heavily influenced by by parts, materials, chemicals, things like that. Obviously, the state water project, that will reflect the increase that we just talked on the Table A. Canal water is largely driven by the QSA agreement, getting one additional water that we have to to pay for. And two, those rates go up every year. And so you compound that over a couple of years, that's over two million dollar expense increase. Stormwater looks like it's going though.
Just for that. I understand that there's an inflator built into our contract for the QSA water. What do we, I'm just curious, do you know what the year-to-year change on that inflator?
It's based on a couple of different indexes, largely it's the producer's price index from one year to the other.
Right, I'm just curious about the number.
So this next year, we're actually projecting just a three percent. It's been lower and higher than that in last years and that was tracking the 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 index through January.
Three percent on the rate and then another five thousand acre feet of actual water.
Right, and tapping up with what the actual rate increases were the last couple of years versus what we budgeted.
Do we know what the rate is per acre foot right now?
There's another slide, it might be on there, but part of that answer's on there at least. I don't know which slide.
Next year, for the incremental amount of QSA water, we're looking at two sixty-six an acre foot offset with some net reimbursements, about one seventy-five as as the net for the initial amount.
For the, for the height, for the most expensive trudge.
For the most expensive new trudge.
Yeah, no, great, yeah, that's.
The overall rates are because you can average the cheaper stuff.
And so it's the QSA agreement, the new water that's driving canal. And then stormwater, it looks like it's an increase, but really what's going on there is you'll see what's called capitalized labor budget, it looks like a negative. So we take out of labor from the operating budget and into the CIP budget, that work that we're doing on the CIP project. So when our CIP projects slow down, we don't take as much out, and so it looks like an increase. Obviously, stormwaters have major, now some major projects going on, but those are projecting to slow down if not be completed. And so that that just, the operating budget gets impacted as the layer goes back to it. On the east replenishment, we've talked quite a bit about that. So we we are projecting an expense decrease as we curtail replenishment, both the cost that they pay for canal water, there's less canal water going and electricity being the other piece, not as much water pumped up to the facility. And then the rest are relatively flat.
So is the Real Bravo water item or West Replenishment the only items driving the increase in the budget?
It's only material item. And again, we're planning to pay that out of reserves, not not rates.
So as I mentioned, the.
We're going to be under, we're going to be under budget, the time for this year, correct?
Mostly relating to CIP expenses moving to next year, so that's just a timing difference, but it does show up as being under budget.
Are you showing that here in these in these things where where you you're seeing actual versus budget, budget of twenty twenty-three?
So so the actual is last year's actual, we have the projected numbers in the attachments.
Okay, so this is not projected.
Yeah, that's not projected for this year, this is the amended budget in the orange.
So, but you did, so overall favorable for the year that's going to end this June.
Yes, we're either on par or a little bit better.
Ten, fifteen, I don't know.
Depends on which, on which fund, I mean, just.
You seem to know everything, so I just. I mean, it's not unusual to see that, but it's mostly the unexpended capital.
Yeah, we're we're healthy in domestic fund, which is the key one, the other ones are fairly on on par. The only one that looks like, if you look at the off-line summary, where it looks like we're being really healthy, but it's all driven by the state water project fund. We expected roughly fifty percent is what we budgeted on. And obviously, that was in that for the full year, so it came in under, and so we see savings that's through reserves. When you roll that up, it looks like a large net revenue, but it's only really relating to that fund. So salaries and and benefits. The key number here, I'd probably highlight, we're, one, we're looking at roughly a hundred million dollar total budget, salaries and benefits, all benefits. I wanted to include this slide just so you get a sort of sense of impact between wages, which is on the far left, versus the various pieces of benefits that go go into that. Obviously, wages is key, key number, influences things here. And so in total, we're looking at roughly a hundred million. Year to year, we look at the gross number, but I mean, you're not taking out things like capitalized labor and other sorts of things all in. It's really a two-point-eight percent budget increase. So so this, although it's a big part of the budget, isn't really driving anything above inflationary rates, if not below inflationary rates on on the increases. There is one proposed change on total FTE count for next year, going from five sixty-nine to five hundred and seventy FTE. And that's one under under Robert and the imported water area to get a a higher level specialist to assist in that area. It's the only overall part of the FTE change. You'll you'll see in the attachments a detailed schedule of all the positions and what they've looked at both proposed for next year as well as the last few years to see the changes. We routinely do changes within areas to stay within budget imprint, but that's the only net change as as an addition.
So so help me out here, so for salaries and benefits, you're saying a two-point-eight percent overall increase. But it seems like all the components are up more than that, you know, call of five percent, full employment, health benefit, cost increase of fifteen percent per caliber year, but so. What's offsetting those to get it so low?
Really, two, I think, two primary things, so both the assumption factors, but we reset the budget every year with what actually has happened. And so like on on wages, although we might say those that are here now are projected to get a five percent call over next year based on inflation, it all sticks in the account, but we've had turnover. And you have seen employees that are retiring being replaced with those that usually come in at the beginning of the salary schedule. And on benefits, although the premiums might be increasing, you do have a large number of staff that change new elections every year and they go for the lower premium ones because they have the cost share. Or they do opt-outs, and there's been a large swing in opt-outs as well. All of that are savings baked into the number that offsets.
So the the increase, are you comparing it to last year's budget or the projected number?
Budget to budget.
So it was the starting budget.
Starting budget.
From last year, so we might have baked a little too much in the last.
Yeah, and that that's part of this one.
We also have, we bake in the full FTE count. We typically have the twenty to twenty-five vacancies at about a hundred and sixty thousand apiece, so.
You'll you'll see that actually in the next slide, we look at O and M actuals as next, because it has the most positions. But we want to include all the major assumptions that go into the salary budget, so you you see that there. We have been seeing larger than normal invasion premium increases on health, that's fifteen percent number. Probably comes in under that, I think the last few years have been in ten to twelve percent range. Some some years you get actually very low number and then they seem to all catch up in the next couple of years. So that's that's the assumption. And then just give a sense of how much each department makes up that that total included salaries and benefits by department. Here, just highlighting back to that that last comment on, you see in like O and M, actual for last year's about forty-six million or FY twenty-two, and then that jumps up to fifty-two. Largely, a lot of that difference is the vacancies, right? That's all near a large portion of the positions in the district, so it shows up more clearly there. But largely, you've got status quo increases. And so the only above average one you see is in adding because we're adding that position as we talk. So on supplies and services, this is what we might think of as the most discretionary, or at least costs we have the most influence over, especially as departments. But it's a bit of a missummer because it's a it's a catch-all for everything, pretty much everything else, it's not a major category. And so by catch-all, I mean, you have legal, all of the legal expenses in here, the turf rebates are in here. You get things, anything that's professional study, like salt and nutrient management plan or even permit fees, everything that we have to pay to the state, various permits that we hold. Everything gets lumped up into this one, so there's a lot of different driving forces, depending on which apartment and area they're talking about that make up the number. But overall, when you exclude the drought fund, turf rebates, which were in this year but aren't in next year, it's a two-point-five percent budget increase. And this is probably the best example of us trying to manage budget as we can as as departments. And so there are some large things in here, just just to highlight. One of that total number, there's less than three million, what we consider our normal rebates budget. Scottman's team highlighted this at the last budget meeting, so there are still turf rebate monies and next year it's the normal amount that continue on. It also includes money that we pass on to others that come from grants, it's IRWM related, that's about a million of that total budget. And then we're still seeing large increases on on chemicals, although that's subsided, it's still high. So assuming about a thirteen and a half percent increase on chemicals. This also includes all our insurance premiums or self-insurance costs on that note. So the assumption is we're continuing with auto liability self-insurance for the next year. So we're budgeting on a basis of what we think estimated claims, might be actual payout and claims might be, and a lot of those are relating to past activity that might come due in budget year and not necessarily something new. There is some good news, and I'll get into the details in the next slide, but we do have a a new strategy with leveraging the OPEB fund, which really comes in as a savings to the overall budget, about a million and a half dollars. And then utilities I showed here too, because obviously it's a much district-wide expense. So a little over half percent total budget increase, but it's misleading because one-point-four million is a reduction per temporary thing being the catch amount of punishment, and so otherwise be a little under seven percent.
What's the amount that we have budgeted for claims and settlements?
They're all over the place.
I think your rough total.
I I would say insurance, including claims and settlements, so all in is a little less than six million. So all of our premiums and and a portion of that being for payment of claims and settlements. There's some amounts we already have reserved for existing like raised legal cases, which have already been reserved, which don't show up in the budget. Because that's set aside in in our reserves, we can talk about that. So it's not a new expense in in the future budget.
I'm guessing that doesn't include like when somebody appeals their water bill, that wouldn't be.
No, that that usually just gets netted against revenues.
Reduces revenue.
So the the good news with OPEB. As as you know, probably about seven years ago, the the district established a trust fund and has done some significant contributions to it with the idea of having a funding mechanism to pay for retiree health benefits. And so that fund has both grown, it's been contributed to, and we are now at over a hundred percent fund, which is an excellent place to be, and most agents, other agencies would be jealous. So leveraging leveraging that position, it's now a good time to actually draw down from it. And the mechanism that we can use, which is very traditional, is you contribute to it what the actuary says is really the cost representing the additional service that all the employees earn in that year. And then you, with the draw, all of the actual expenses that we're paying for retirees. And so it's sort of a net between the number, and you see that here in the chart. So we would be contributing about nine hundred thousand, but really withdrawing a net of a million on top of that. So the the difference is we had a budget of two-point-four million this year that goes down to nine hundred thousand, and so that's a million and a half in in savings. This is something new that we would be doing, obviously. It's, we've been contributing to it in years past, but in talking with both the actuary and our investment manager, both feel very comfortable. This is a good time to start.
Will this take us to below a hundred percent in the future if we continue? Will this take us to below a hundred percent in the future if we continue to do this?
In, in the theoretical world that actuary lives in, we should stay roughly at a hundred percent. The, between the amount that the investment fund should grow every year, what we're withdrawing, it should stay about there. And if we get off, then you contribute a little bit more and you get right back up there.
So we're going to keep it there?
We're going to keep it there. That's, that's the goal, is it's now healthy enough to support itself and do what it's supposed to do.
So just, just to be clear, that then the goal is right at a hundred percent? And this, this reduction of contributions would, would reduce our, our hundred and seven down to closely a hundred?
Yes, over, over time. We should revolve around the hundred mark.
So for, for anyone that remembers, when we made those, I think we put twenty million in there. That was painful. You know, we tried to do it. I think we were successful doing it without real budget impacts. We tried to add the bob and weave line, but how do you get money out without pushing the rates up? It's nice to see it actually doing something for us now.
Yeah, million and a half, it makes, it's a difference.
That's good.
So, and then just showing up supplies and services on a departmental level, both last year's actuals, what was in this budget and the more proposing. The news here is that there is no news. It's real, you know, each department's trying to stay within its, its footprint, given inflation and, and other sort of things that we're managing against. So then going on to each fund, as I mentioned, each fund has its own rates and it's really a thing unto itself. And so expecting to get through this pretty quickly, but I wanted you to see it through in each individual lens. So domestic, the news here is that you look in each of the categories and we're relatively leveled. So the only thing really pushes things up is the overall inflationary costs. In canal, this is just highlighting what we've already talked about. You see in the water purchases line, that's everything I mentioned, QSA costs, the additional five thousand acre feet. And then in water purchases, it also reflects and canal rate increases. And so we've been proposing a three and a half percent increase, so that reflects that three and a half percent increase as well. As we're expecting Oasis to actually go online in the next year, means that moving water to that area, so there is a utility cost impact there. And then to highlight, you see over in pass-through contra expenses towards the right side of the screen. This is a, a new thing that we're doing. Essentially, we've shown what we're agency cost shares in the past. For instance, when San Diego County helped reimburse us for the canal lining. And that would be shown in the budget as a reduction to, to expense, as a contra expense. But we actually have to account for that as a revenue. So when you look at the financial statements, it's revenue. So we're just making it consistent going forward. And so you'll see these, what were as negative expenses as revenues in the new budget. So you won't see contra expenses anymore. But where it does show up, you'll see a jump in usually intergovernmental revenues, and that's where that, that's being shown. So net effect is zero, but, but if it looks like a jump, that's, it's just a change in how we count for. Sanitation is almost.
On the, on the canal, the, the key base funds end. The QSA funds end? You're, you're thinking of the, the QSA mitigation fund, which has an, right?
This next budget year's last contribution. So it's included in FY twenty-four budget, but it's.
But this, this is the actual purchase of water from QSA, which does end at the seventy-five year mark theoretically. It's the, it's the mitigation that.
I think we have two more years of actual increases, if I'm not mistaken.
How long are you at twenty-six?
A ramp, ramp of water. And then, and then the inflator takes the rates up every year. Yeah, so that goes through twenty, seventy, I guess.
So we should be at ninety-three this year, ninety-eight, ninety-three and twenty-four, ninety-eight, twenty-five, and a hundred and thirty and twenty-six, I think is the way it goes.
Then that's the table?
No, but you've got it every once in a while. Some things stick and some things don't.
So a couple more years. So we do, we do have some mitigation costs. And it was fluctuated, it was fluctuated. Big time. Sometimes it was half a million, sometimes it was millions.
Two point three million, I think was one of the highs.
Now, that, that does bring up a good point, certainly for the next three years. That you'll, you'll see in the latter years on the rate side, I'll touch on it then, but ten percent increases in canal. And what's driving that is this. It's the, the idea that we have to pay more QSA water, rate is going up. But incrementally, the only additional water that helps pay for that is, as we project, is Oasis water. And that's paying the class one eight plus its own surcharge. So it's paying roughly a hundred dollars per acre foot. And we're paying hundred seventy to two hundred net. And so incrementally, you're not covering costs. It's actually, it's actually being in that draw. So the whole base has rate pressure. And so just, just to draw two points together, when you see the ten percent increase in the latter years, that's, that's because of the QSA.
Well, we're also fortunate that we are able to sell the under run to that at the QSA rate.
If we have any more under.
If we have any more under, which will again create rate pressure because now we don't have net purchasing.
Already touched on sanitation fund. Obviously sanitation fund is heavily influenced by chemicals. There is some, some additional focus on contract work next year, which gets put into that number on collection line maintenance inspection. And so, you know, we have these initiatives and so they show up in a year or two and then they off when we focus on other things. Stormwater, obviously this is funded by property tax. The operating portion of stormwater really isn't that significant. It's mostly influenced by CIP, and we reviewed that last year, but there's not much going on on the, the stormwater side, other than that capitalized labor piece going down, since we talked about. On the west replenishment, everything here is relating to the Rio Bravo increase. You can see the significance of having to pay for the nine five hundred acre feet and what that does on the water purchases line. And that also includes any canal rate increases that we do. East replenishment, just to show it on the numbers, that's how the influence of the temporary curtailment on replenishment shows up. It's in the utilities line item and the water purchases line item. Mission Creek only looks significant because we've really narrowed down the scale here because it's a much, much smaller fund, but essentially not much going on there. And then I'll stop there on expenses if there's any questions, because next we're getting into touching on revenue. So I apologize for a very dizzy slide, but I wanted you to see all in what revenues look like and, and what's driving them. So on water sales, you see that to be mostly flat. Water sales is both canal sales and domestic sales. And so here, this includes any proposed increases that we're doing. So for instance, domestic, we're proposing five and a half percent. And canal, three and a half percent, it's flat because canal sales are expected to go down because it's not selling to east replenishment, the replenishment water. And so you have some offsetting pressures there, just to show up on the overall line. Sanitation service charges and, and service charges both include the, the cross-the-board rate increases that, that I'll get into later. And then in the replenishment charges, you've got reduced pumping on each replenishment for Oasis. And so that, that gets incorporated into that number. Obviously, for each of the three replenishment funds, we talked about, the proposal was zero percent on those. So really the only changes are pumping, changes that go into that number. And the good news is what I wanted to focus on the next few slides, which is both property taxes, general and state water project. You're seeing marked increases and that's really catching up to the latest numbers we're getting on property valuations. Obviously, the tail end of coded property value spent here, well, everywhere, but here in the valley as well. And so those are the most real of numbers that we have that reflects actively largely faster, catching up there. And then intergovernmental revenue is what I just mentioned. So you have the reclassification of what was contra expenses, roughly like five million dollars. And then about fourteen million from the euro reclamation for, for the incentive payments. And then although not as big of a number on, on the scale, I will talk about also investment income going from actuals of last year, about four million doubling to about eight million. So the other good news story.
So, so that's very remarkable. And is that because of our change in investment strategy or because the principal is larger? I mean, that's huge, so.
Mostly it's being able to take advantage of a much higher interest rate environment. And it's a part of the environment, the interest rates are up, and so we have an environment where we can make more money. And then the other is that we've tried to be nimble to take advantage of that. And so we've added additional investment options, these liquidity accounts like late camp. And, and now we can actually get those rates. And so we've moved what money we thought was safe to move into those. These are all treasury, you know, they're purchasing treasuries. It's all ultra-safe investments. But we're actually getting that investment income now. Which is what I just mentioned here on the slide. So you've got on the top being overall what our investment earnings are, as I just mentioned, going from about four to eight, so doubling. I'll be already seeing in our projections for this year that are increasing to about five point one. And then you see the value of investment earnings relatively for each of the funds. Stormwater benefits the most out of this. It has the highest reserves. And frankly, it needs the income to help pay for the CIP and the, the ongoing. So taxes is almost an endowment because our only other revenue is a very fixed amount of tax. And so on one side, I'd say the, the number almost pains my heart to say we're, we're only projecting to get about two percent in the environment, which is much higher. The trouble is, is you buy these investments, they have the rate, and it takes some time for them to mature and be able to reinvest in larger amounts. If you sell them, you're selling them at a loss, which makes no sense. And so it just takes a little bit of time for the overall fund to get higher. But we are on liquid funds, roughly we have, let's say, eighty million right now in liquid funds with camp earning five percent. So that's where you start seeing the overall revenue lines jumping up and so taking advantage of that.
Remind me what camp stands for? I know what lathe is. What, what's camp?
California Asset Management Pool, if, if I remember right. It's a JPA of governments that invest very short-term in things like treasuries.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So on property taxes, two differences of looking at the number here. The, the top one is all-in property taxes, not state water project. So we have property taxes from a few different avenues. Some of them have to remain with fund. So you see stormwater, that can only go to stormwater, so it's non-discretionary. But we do have some general property taxes, that's the blue in the top chart, that, that how much we're allocating to each of the funds. Then bottom chart is essentially just looking at the blue, what that looks like for the funds that have it and how much per year. This, this big change, as we discussed last month, and at the JWAC, includes reallocate from east rack to sanitation, three point four million. And property taxes, I'll get into the impact of that later on in the, in the presentations, but the, the activity that we've seen from property increases, valuation increases in the last, last year was roughly eight and a half percent. So that's what makes this number. Going forward, so the additional increases are slowing down considerably. And so we're, we're thinking three percent of a fairly conservative number on top of what we've already seen. And largely, sales are plummeting everywhere as the interest rates hit on up and supply is actually really low. And, but we do get CPI increases part evaluations with county. I'm sure that's going to max out at two percent. So we're really only thinking about an extra one percent on top of CPI increase. But you see, you see the totals here.
Well, why would you allocate, take the three point four from the east and move it to sanitation and not into canal?
So the, well, the last lines are devoted to that, but the short answer is sanitation needs it the most. We would otherwise be looking at a sixteen and a half percent rate increase for sanitation, just to keep even and not be in a deficit. We've lowered that down to eight and a half through this money. And that keeps it within the Prop two eighteen rate, so we don't have to send out notices. And doing this allows East Rack to still be at a zero percent rate increase. So it was the best holistic sort of option that I could recommend.
But isn't the, the, because the east rack is going down canal, you, you talked about that. Canal is, is, is having to take bigger increase?
In future years, right now, it, the impact isn't so strong. It's really as the QSA ramps up in the future years. So that will be a future decision if we wanted to reallocate further. That, that is a, a decision, but right now canal is only projected or requests to go three and a half percent versus the sixteen and a half percent for sanitation, so.
May have looked at that because it's a touchy situation, I think, if we are.
So just getting to some of the, the major assumptions and so you can see the numbers on sales, our sales. So domestic, you've got here, the, the way to read this graph is the two dotted lines are highs and lows that we've seen in the last ten years to show you the range that we actually see with water sales at a given time. And the yellow line going across is what last specific three years of average look like. Our overall tactic for guessing, and it's guesswork, domestic sales for next year is essentially to say that this year, this year, fiscal year twenty-three is a low year, both because we had drought penalties, you had significant messaging on the drought. And we've been implementing turf rebates, turf versions. And last year was a more normal year in water sales, if you take the average between them, recognizing some of these conservation efforts will endure. But without the, the penalties and other sorts of things, it, it might pop up a little bit. You notice in the overall graph, that the last line, it doesn't change that much. So this, although it's, it's, it's best work, we're well within the, the ten-year range, certainly within the three-year range.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Canal was a little bit more interesting to talk about, because you have some major actors going on here. But how to read the graph, same, same way, but the light green at the bottom represents ag sales. So you get to see the difference between the natural fluctuation with axles per year. And the dark green is all class two sales. That's both internal sales to our different, our different funds, as well as including replenishment, which is a really large factor as well as any other golf courses or anything else that's taking canal water. And so the, the big drop for next year, you'll, you'll see that ag is increasing. That's the Oasis sales, estimated about ten thousand. We'll see what that actually is. This, this is a big year to see where reality comes in. And then the dark green dropping is the, the drop replenishment, which shows up as a sales, sale to now normal numbers. So they offset each other, but it's a net reduction. Any, any questions here?
This is kind of up in the air. And it, it has to do with what, of what happens with the federal government and what they say about, you know, Colorado River water, I think. I mean, that may force people to come into our valley that maybe wouldn't have been here. We just don't know.
Just to show you the numbers, but again, we're not projecting any rate increases on the rack side. You'll notice both west and, well, west is saying relatively low. It has a normal band that it lives within on pumping. East, the drop there is from Oasis, switching over from pumping to canal usage. And then Mission Creek has a natural variation to it, and we're staying within more recent numbers. So what are the proposed rates? The, the strategy, at least that staff hook and, and coming up with what to propose to you all is really dealing with a few different things. So just so you know, the mentality going into it. The largest priority, I would say, is dealing with what is termed in the presentation structural deficits. We have ongoing expenses. These are steadily going up because inflation, salary increases, the whole, the whole bit. Expenses are going up and our revenues are otherwise stagnant. And so we're in some sense bleeding reserves, and you can only do that for so long. So just to stop the bleeding is addressing structural deficits and maintain reserves. That requires rate increases. So that's largely what we're dealing with, because if you don't deal with it this year, you have to deal with it in the future. Otherwise, reserves run out, and we'll get into what that looks like. And the pain is just that much harder in any future year when you try and then stop bleeding. So reserve use is appropriate sometimes, usually dealing with the one-time expenses, not these ongoing sorts of ones. And so that's why in this year, I wouldn't necessarily call it one time, but we do think in the longer term, it might still be rare to get Rio Bravo water. And so until we know more, using seven point six out of reserves is, seems appropriate for this next year. Um is uh seems appropriate for this next year, um West Rack does have a sufficient amount, I think we're projecting something like twenty five million. Um and so this would kind of add twenty five million, but just to give a sense of what that would otherwise do. Um is uh if we just put this through on rack rate, you're getting roughly a forty percent rack rate increase if you just put this through. And another five percent in domestic beyond five point five, so using reserves is saving, you know, five percent of a rating. Um and I I think that's important message.
Let me ask one question, the real Bravo water, I don't think we've got it while I've done this board, so where does that water go to?
Yes, sir.
So we just put that into? Okay, got it.
Um we had this uh a topic last month about debt covenants and so we have to keep that in mind as we're setting rates, at least to meet the minimums. Um there's the two different lenses, one is uh for our normal bonded debt. Directly on go, that is still traded for Colorado River.
Right.
So it's not actually real gravel wet water.
No, no, I know, yeah, but that's like, that's where we're putting it, yes, we took a break for three years.
We took a break for two years.
Um I think it was, let's try to remember, I think it was about two years.
It was at least one year.
Yeah.
Last year, no, I didn't, I can't remember the year before that, um honestly, so we'll have to get back to you on that. We we did receive it last, so it's only been a break one year, two years, okay.
One year, two, three years, one. Alright, whatever, I mean, we we used to get it.
Yes, and we actually made arrangements to get more.
A range between ninety six hundred and fifty. So we're getting on the low end of the range this coming year.
Yes, they made a purchase, as I understand it, Robert could give you a more detail, but they made a purchase of about a hundred thousand acre feet. Uh for this two hundred and fifty thousand purchase or gr- agreement. Um and then they found out that um the water they purchased was no longer exportable to us. And resulted in a deficit in that basin, current basin, so that's why they had to stop. But because this year's extra wet, they were able to not only make up the deficiency, but provide the uh the ninety five, ninety six hundred. Now, I don't know whether they've asked us if they could deliver more, but our position is no.
Because it's so expensive, I mean.
This is not cheap water.
We should sell to the salt sea. I think I think it seems expensive now, but it it's probably not gonna be that expensive in four forty years or twenty five years. So I mean, that's, I hate to give up a new water the way things are now.
Yeah, we're not giving it up.
I mean, I don't care what it costs.
Yeah.
If it's available, let's get it. If we keep have, keep having years we're gonna get it, but likely based on the modeling and production, we're not gonna be getting it.
And we are not in the market to purchase more water right now, we think based on our long term planning, that we probably still support development up to an initial forty thousand acre.
I understand, just there's a there's a X factor in Colorado and that's that's.
Yes.
That's that's what I'm worried about, so.
Yes. So that uh just touching on, we're trying to manage to make sure that we're compliant with the debt covenants, but. Those are the two different lenses for bonded debt, it's when we set rates, getting at least one twenty five covered. And then for SRF, the funds that has SRF loans, which are domestic and sanitation, we have to actually achieve one twenty five cover. Um and I'll get a little more details there, that does include things like green revenues and and others for technical compliance, but it doesn't help you. With rating agencies when they see structurally, we're not taking in an ongoing uh revenues to pay for expenses. We did try and keep all of our rates within existing property team limits, we don't have to send out another notice. So some of these you'll see is across the board increases and other ones, why is that one a little bit more than the overall, it's because we're sticking with the 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 limits. Um and then uh lastly, uh since as talked about last month uh as well. We do think that we need to issue more debt within this next five years to pay for some critical projects on three different funds. Um and so keeping the interest rate low is is a key for affordability there. And if we can at least maintain our reserves, um and generally the coverage levels we've seen, we should be okay for that. So you'll see instead of adding the reserves or this kind of thing, just trying to maintain, that's the stop the bleeding uh uh sort of overall effort. So getting into uh what this looks like for domestic. Um we included all the individual rates, not gonna go into those other than just show you, then we talk about a proposed five and a half percent increase. It's every rate individually going up five and a half percent, so every customer is affected to the to the same proportion. Uh for a normal residential customer uh for next year, that would use twenty units of water, as we typically try and show, it's a it's a dollar eighty eight. Per month, um is is what that translates to. Um and just to highlight, looking backwards, uh obviously we don't raise rates every year, uh every few years, we've. Done a a rate increase usually triggered by a a study and so if you just average what we have actually raised rates in the last five years. It comes out to a rough two and a half percent per year, um is is what we've been doing.
But we're only willing to be adopting rates for one year.
One year, yeah, the forecast is merely for information and giving a head up on on where we think we're going. Just for for information purposes, you know, I believe you see this every year, um but where. Where we are compared to nearby agencies, um as the average monthly bills and the. Yellow portion is what that additional dollar eighty eight um does uh in comparison to the other agents, obviously it doesn't change. Anything with relative thinking, um and so uh just to give you the updated numbers here. For uh canal, uh the three and a half percent that we're talking about is to the base rates you'll see on the individual ones. Um our last study showed uh actually look at the numbers. Um things like gate charges, uh some of the surcharges like quagga, still need some catching up to do to get to get to cost. So those and their smaller, the smaller amounts in the total are above the three and a half percent. So when you average them in, like quagas on every unit of water, um for a class one customer, that's. An actual four and a half percent increase and for class two customers, three point eight, but the base rates are three and a half percent. I wanted to be transparent about how much in total proportion that works out um. Uh to about a dollar seventy an acre foot for uh class one egg users uh as as a proposed increase. Oh, and on this one, again, the same metric, if you look at the last five years, what we've actually raised by, it averages out to about a half a percent per year. For sanitation, uh this one is is generally speaking an eight and a half percent increase, there's uh the. The account charge, which going off of our cost of service, it needs to catch up a little bit, so that's technically nine percent, but when you average them out, what a known customer sees, it's. It's eight and a half percent, um and our average increase over the last five years has been um uh one point six percent. For a typical residential customer, this is a little over two dollars per month.
So so you go back to canal real fast, because I'm here, it's you. It it doesn't give a total, or did you, did you say that and I missed it? So the total, when you need to surcharges, gate charges and water charges, what's the percentage?
So for for class one, if you include the two base charges which apply to everybody, um quagga included. Uh it's going up to thirty nine sixty five an acre foot, which is the dollar seventy um additional, that's that. Line a little a little halfway through the through screen, we look at class two, because then we have the additional water supply surcharge on top of that. Um it's uh about four dollars per acre foot, um on a base of what's now about a hundred and five dollars an acre foot. So going from a hundred and five twenty five to one oh nine seventy nine.
So on a percentage, how much are we going up?
Class one about four and a half percent to class two about three point percent. Four point five on total charges. Full charges. Right, yes. Base rate itself is is three, three and a half.
But the total together, because you can't have one without the other.
Right, right. Four point five. Yeah, four point five on the total.
Four point five on the total and that's what you're objecting to the next.
Well, that's for next year, um after next year, we catch up on the surcharges and then um it's uh. Uh you see the overall percentages down below the three point three, three point three and then. We get up to about ten percent nine and a half in the last two years, that's trying to to cover the QSA costs, especially as. Um Oasis demand kicks in and then you don't have the under run to to be mitigated.
So class two, the increase is what?
So that's the.
Three point eight.
Yeah, three point eight, that's a very bottom line on the the chart.
Who who pays the the Oasis surcharge?
Just just those new customers getting the new Oasis um uh connections, so it'll just be a.
Because so going forward.
Yeah. Yeah, so they pay the the class one base rate, including quagga and then the additional surcharge on top of that, which is fifty six dollars an acre foot, I think.
Fifty equals fifty nine.
Fifty nine.
Fifty nine twenty six.
And then that that in future years will be adjusted as well, but the this number is what we've communicated to the community to start with, so we we kept that there. Any other questions on canal? Sanitations, we talked about this, this and domestic are 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 funds that are the most challenged and need the most help um going forward. So sanitation obviously has the highest increases on a percentage basis, uh we get into why, but it's largely driven by. Um one inflation of CIP costs and paying your debt, um uh uh you have baked in debt service that's kicking up. Over the next several years and we need uh ongoing revenues to cover it. So on the sanitation comparison, the only thing I I note here is um we get. More within the range of other agencies and and the ones we showed here are actually all throughout the state. Um the the there are differences, obviously domestic benefits from property taxes, paying state property tax, uh state project tax. Covering those expenses and so that that isn't shown on the rates, but for the most part sanitation is just the cost of sanitation. Um and so uh that's why this comes a little more in range and even with that in in mind, uh we're still on the the very low end. For typical sewer charges.
Do we know that that number for City of Palm Springs is a comparable number, just makes you wonder if maybe there's something else? How are they so much lower than everybody else?
David, you wanna just know?
Sure, um so I know they haven't increased that rate for a while, so I know their their plan, that there's a manageable third party company at this point. So I think they've haven't done, I've worked there too, they had the cost service study and want to actually look at where rates are at this point, but that. Isn't basically what the contract prices for that is they make those rates.
David used to work at Palm Springs.
So so maybe when the contract is up, they'll have big rate increase or?
Potentially, I I think again, yeah, this way speak to their expenses.
There's something going on there that.
Probably for maintenance would be made, I would guess, yes. And then on the uh replenishment rates, uh zero percent across the board, but. We do project increases in the the latter years, that's to give you a sense on a per acre foot with uh each one. On west replenishment, you'll notice the two eighteen uh limit, last notice that we did and what we said we might be going up to. Is significantly higher than what we're actually proposing to do, this is largely um because we had assumed that we would be getting real Bravo water every year. And as talked about, that's a a large number for that fund and so um that's that's the main difference. Um and we're not, at least in the forecast, assuming that that's an every year expense. Um and then on the east rack side, you see the increases a lot of years, that says replenishment comes back on and the expenses ramp back up, we've gotta cover this. So these last slides, and then we're done, I promise, um are are probably the ones of most interest, which are. Uh the why do we need the increases, what's the impact if we don't do them and uh generally uh the. Part of the issue here and so uh to to read the graphs, just to go over basically, the one on the left is. If we didn't do any rate increases for any of the five years in the future, where are we um at the end of that period? And the one on the right is where do we propose to be with the the five and a half percent rate increase, this is for domestic. And so the the big things of note um are, as as I've been mentioning, uh you'll see on the 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 right side there, the. Racketed structural deficit, that's we're already in the structural deficit, you see on the left side, green line is lower than where our expenses are. And over time, that just goes up as expenses go go up and for each year that that happens, you draw down on reserves and so those are your. Your bars underneath it where we are, projected the end of next year and then each year after that, um and so the the key takeaway. Is whether it's in four years or five years or six years, generally within five years, you would have no savings at all um. On the domestic side, if you don't raise rates and the the key quest for trying to do this in manageable five and a half percent per year. Um way is to make it manageable for customers to to bait and otherwise, let's say if we waited three years, you're looking at. Let's say a fifteen percent rate increase and that's even harder to try and message at at that point. Um so trying to just keep it s- a smooth increase um to to stop the bleeding. Um to give you a sense of how much five and a half percent in increase is for the fund, uh it's a little less than five million dollars, so this is significant. Um for the fund, which is about a hundred million dollar fund and um also just to note, uh. Billing CIP projects doesn't really uh impact this fund at at all. Um because most of the projects that we're doing are paid for by other things, whether that's grant funds or capacity fees or what have you. I think of the uh thirty six million we have in CIP, three millions pay go funded. So um to give you a sense of proportion, but um and of that, I think half of it is for a well, um the mechanism for a well. That's just one project, uh so it's not much, I mean, you can you can delay it, it's not gonna change the overall picture here.
Um so Rick, uh for fiscal, just looking at fiscal twenty four. With no rate rate increase on domestic, you're saying that the debt service coverage ratio would be negative point three four?
If uh not include grants, yes, and I I intentionally didn't include grants there, all the grants could be used for. Compliance purposes, the rating agency would look at that and not include grants for the sake of the rating, so. I I'd say we would be in compliance, but.
So you could, so alright, so including grants, what would it be?
Uh it would be much higher, maybe three, four or five times, because we have large amounts of CIP grants coming, so. So we, I I do think it would be.
So the last bullet, the next 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 bullet eliminates debt funding as a pre-cup option, so. So that's the real reason you.
Right.
You think the rate increase now be uh and the rate shock.
And range.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it we, if we didn't, certainly one year maybe not very much pushing, but certainly two years. Um you you've eliminated being able to issue debt as any kind of real option.
Yeah, I mean, what what we're not taking into account here, which seems to happen every year, we have been here a while. Is that, you know, we we don't have full employment, we don't have full expenditure on the capital side. And so the reserves continue to grow or or they don't drop nearly as much as what we've budgeted. So we end up doing things need that or we're being asked to raise rates when maybe we don't need to. Because of the conservative budgeting that we have. And so it looks like, it looks bad today, but a year from now, it's like, oh, well, we had a ten million dollar positive variance, you know, we're gonna be okay.
But that's typically just one time money, right, because capital projects will be built, they will continue.
Well, it happens every year, it seems, I mean, we don't go over, I don't know that we've ever gone over.
Well, I think if you go back, you can see we haven't had domestic rate increase in a while, right?
I know, but it's out, but it gets recommended every year.
Well, I I feel pretty confident with the analysis we have this year and this year, um it's not an election year.
No, I get it, but but you're still assuming full employment, which we probably won't have and you're assuming hundred percent expenditure. On capital, which I believe was into this number, right?
No, that's.
That doesn't go into this.
That's not showing on this number, the the little yellow line on top, but that's.
Yeah.
You get a sense that's doesn't really act at all. And the full employment issue is not by fund, right, that's overall district, we have five hundred and seventy FTE, we have maybe twenty twenty five vacancies. You don't know that those are gonna be in.
I don't understand, but they're gonna be somewhere.
Right, which is why we try and budget full staffing, so that we don't have a problem in the funds, because we underestimate.
We do this every year. Actually, I think your presentation is excellent, but I'm not trying to criticize, just trying to understand, so. So, I mean, we will not violate our debt covenants if we don't do a rate increase in domestic. But there are some potential other problems that we will create for ourselves in the future.
Yes.
Although with that put as.
Although would that put us at risk immediately um in putting us at default on the uh S R F loan?
No, because the, from a, that's why I talked about tactical compliance, that would be a tactical default. I don't think we're at risk of that, um because we have these large amounts of grant revenue coming in, but those don't support our operations. And a, a credit rating agency sees right through that.
Right.
Um so we wouldn't have to do the legal sort of things that come with the tactical default. But the, the point on um you're gonna get downgraded on credit rating if we try to issue debt in three years, which. Is, is part of the plan funding those projects, so if we don't actually issue the debt, we'll be, our reserve will drop, will plummet. Because we're expecting to reimburse ourselves with like thirty million dollars worth of debt. And if we don't actually issue that, that's, that, it's a big problem, because now we can't get an attractive interest rate and it gets scary at that time, so.
You know, the other thing is that um I just wanna sort of mention this, when you use the term structural deficit, it sounds really ominous. And it's not necessarily a term that we used, at least in the couple of years I, I've been here. So it kind of implies that we haven't been doing things right to get to this point, which I don't believe is the case. So um I don't know, maybe there's different ways to language this, but to me it just sounds like uh implies somehow. Which is actually not the case.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's intentional because of our reserves. So the structural deficit's a way to draw down the reserves to something that's more closer to our target. That's how I look at it, I mean, if someone comes to me and says, you just passed an unbalanced budget, I'll say, well, yeah, but it's intentional.
Yeah, it's balanced with reserves.
Yeah, it's balanced with reserves, yeah.
Yeah, I, I understand all that, I just think it's, I don't like the, the uh, the image of projects, but.
Yeah, the words, the words, but, well, yeah.
Go ahead.
I get what you're saying, uh.
Yeah.
It's, it, it, you have a negative connotation.
Inside the gus, but anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, that the puritan just say we have ongoing expenses and ongoing revenues. And at some point, there will be a decision that said we've drawn down reserves enough.
Right.
And when you say that, to then increase revenues to stop drawing down, you've got a much wider gap and that's what's kind of.
You know, I mean, our, our overall reserves are, are healthy. And even on, even on domestic, you have this blue part, um at least for fiscal twenty four. That under conservative budget is still, still exists. So you're still have more than, more reserves than what you need, even with no rate increase.
Well, the, the hard thing shown here too, and just trying to be fully transparent is. Uh credit rating agency, we talked about seeing at a double A negative rating, I didn't put it on slide because it's already busy enough. Would put our reserve level should be at in the one twenty to one above hundred and thirty. If you take our reserve levels, they would say we need to double um what they are uh in comparison with other double A rated agencies.
And if, and if we set out them, I would say, well, you know, we're elected to represent the people. And the, the people suffer a rate increase and they look at our financial statement and they say, you guys have. Four or five hundred million dollars in the bank, why are you raising my rate?
Right.
And so we're answerable to them, I know you're, you're doing your job, making sure we don't get in trouble with, with rating agencies. Because we might need to go out and bond again and don't wanna pay too high of a rate, I get that. Um but, but that seems like an unrealistic ask, that they, that they think. We should have, I mean, how much, you know, with all the different funds that we have, our ag reserves are, are large. And, you know, if they had their way, they'd be double, so why do we need seven hundred million dollars in the bank? We don't, you know.
Well, it's a comparative analysis between water agencies. And so when they look at what other water agencies are doing, they'll see that they have higher rates, higher reserves. And so, you know, it just comes down to what is the board willing to do?
Yeah, I, I get, yeah.
And which is why the intent would not, trying to get up that target by any means. It was, if we could just stay the same, that's enough of a defense of the rating agencies, but that's, that's the, the background on, on the why.
Yes, fair.
Um sanitation is, is essentially very similar, um exact same rationale. Uh the only debt that we have on sanitation is uh is S R F debt. Um and as we ramp up those projects, um I think. Significant new project, that, that debt cre- increases substantially over the next five years, so those projects are done and we draw down on that and then we have to start paying on it. And so in the yellow bar, that's why you see the, the growth in the, the yellow shading in the background, that's non-operating expenses. Including debt service. Um and so you see now where, where our revenues are just coming in a little bit under total operating and operating expenses. But over that time, if we stay flat on revenue, um it's, it's uh. In this case, I'm, I'm very certain uh we'll have, we'll have an ongoing issue, because you have a baked in number of, of debt service. So, you know, there's time year to year, one year versus the other, that, there might be some shifting, depending on how we get done with projects. But overall, within the five years, uh we, we would be significantly drawing down reserves year by year. And so I, I think pretty confident in about five years, we will have zero reserves, without any, any increase here.
Sanitation would benefit from um spreading out some of the C I P product projects a little bit more, right?
Um most of sanitation is funded by grants at the point, grants or the loans. And the loans intricately spread out the payments over thirty years, so that doesn't, that doesn't help too much, there's uh only a minority of expenses. I think maybe five million of thirty million that are pay, pay go funded. Uh we, we tried to spread it out by including it in the S R F loans or, or debt that we're gonna issue in a few years. So you, I would say delaying the projects doesn't really help you, eliminating them is really the only option if you're gonna do that and that comes with real impacts.
The, the grant, you don't start paying on until you receive it, correct?
Well, right, yeah, so the grants, we don't pay back at all, um but that's only a portion. Um the, the loans, we do the project, the project finishes and the year after we start the payments, typically how that works.
Correct.
Right.
So if you spread those out. It does change, doesn't it? I don't understand how it does. Well, just you can't get the grant without the, without finishing, without doing the.
Right, yeah, mo- most of grant funds and this is, in this fund, tens of millions are tied to completing projects by a certain date in order to be eligible. So you would lose out potentially on, but certainly millions, I, I can't say the total scope.
I, I think the difference is Anthony suggesting that if we can push projects outside of that five year window. That, then it would potentially, it, it would, it would lower the, the, the yellow part on the right side there.
I, I think we have done that in the past. This is not the first time.
I just think that's the, that's the.
That's all I'm saying, it's not, not.
When you say it doesn't make a difference, you're still assuming that's gonna happen sometime during the five year window.
Or, or later, uh which comes with the rate increase then, so.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Yeah.
It's just a little bit more gradual, a little slower.
I mean, the, as a percentage, it's a high number, but that's because our base rate is low, I mean, by, by any relative term. And so it's though over two dollars per month for normal residential customers, so eight and a half seems like a large number, but in a dollar.
And if you compared our sanitation capital budget to Palm Springs, it's probably a huge difference.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, so they're not, they're probably not investing in.
And then again, I don't have the C I P for sanitation in front of me, but it's not a huge pro- program to begin with. I mean, if five per, if five million of, if it's a thirty million dollar program and five million is pay go, that's not a big program. Yeah, most, most of those projects are, I mean, here you can, they were second water.
I know, yeah.
Which has been a more priority.
Yeah. I'm not saying we're not doing it, I'm just saying that sometimes we stretch them out an extra one or two years and it. I mean, and then sometimes naturally it gets stretched out that way anyways.
Well, once we, uh, once we issue a contract, we don't have really any control over when the project is done. I mean, we give them a completion date, because that's what we expect the project to be finished, I'm not criticizing it, I'm just.
So you're, so our set, just going back to slide three, you don't need to change slide, but, but slide B seven shows that the two eighteen. So, so the two eighteen that we've already issued accommodates that.
That, that eight and a half percent, so that possibly maxes out the eighteen rate. Um anything over that would require, you know. So the, the rate on the right side, which is what we're proposing, this includes the property tax reallocation. And so that's how we're able to have revenues, expenses in balance by the, the end of the five years. Canal Fund, uh this is essentially a reflection of everything we've seen. This one, I uh, we have more flexibility here, um only because uh the, the debt that we do have. Um is not bonded debt and it's not S R F debt, it's bureau debt um on the, on the canal side. And so the, the amount is significant, so you see the yellow growing, that's as those, those lateral projects get completed and we start paying for them. Um it's, it's a significant amount for that fund, um so the repayment there, but we don't have the same debt covenants um that we do with the other ones. And so there's a little more flexibility here. The trouble is between the debt service increasing and you can see fortunately how much that that is in the Q S A water. Um and the only uh increases in demand that we have are Oasis. And that doesn't cover the full amount that we're paying on Q S A. By the end of the five year period, you either uh we raise rates or you're gonna draw it down pretty quickly on, on reserves. And so uh the three and a half is, is within the two eighteen limit and it's to try and moderate what we do at the end. Otherwise, the increases in the end of the period would be even larger, so um uh that's, that's the rationale on, on, on one out. Um otherwise, not ten percent at the end, it's, it's even larger. And so we're trying to just keep pace inflation at this point.
For that one, revenues from the. The four hundred dollars from, from putting the water lake mead, are, are they in these projections?
If you look at the green line, that includes the fourteen million and, and bureau funding. You see it's an elevated level for the first three years.
Yeah.
Um at the end of the five year period, shows you what our normal revenues actually look like if you take that out. Um and then, yeah, so that's, the fifth year is a more normal year with inflation included.
So it is included.
It is included, so and it's the first years look extra rosy, but that's, that's one time money and, you know, the board's talked about different strategic uses for that. So this is my last real slide, um and I know uh as directors, so I had uh some question. And what, what if we do something different with the property tax money than going to um sanitation fund? So I wanted to show really what happens, um depending on at least three different ways to build to that, I'll, I'll know. I, I didn't include Canal here, I didn't know that that would be um a, a particular interest. Um but, so in, in the option that we're recommending. I move, it's, it's all about, we're likely in three point four million in property tax. Um without moving into sanitation, as I, as I talked about, we're looking at a sixteen and a half percent rate increase, which is well over the two eighteen limit. So um if we're gonna try and just stay even revenues and expenses, that's sixteen and a half percent, which would not be two twenty six. Um or two, a little over two dollars per month, it would be about four and a half dollars per month. And so by moving or reallocating this money, what we're really doing is reducing monthly bills by what they'd otherwise have to be. About two dollars and three two cents per, per customer, so that's the advantage, two dollars and thirty two cents per customer um in moving into sanitation. And obviously, we have sanitation customers throughout the whole district area, so it's a broad, um a broad benefit.
Does that get paid back?
No, I mean, that, that would be considered an ongoing revenue, so it's, it's kind of locked in as a savings.
So. But you could do what's under the, the two eighteen, correct? You could do the eight point five.
Yes, so the eight.
This year, this year, and then you could do another two eighteen for years full.
You can.
So that's, that an option.
Yeah, that there's, you have every year forward as an option if we thought there was a better policy use for, for the funds and.
Yeah, I think this is the second year of the two eighteen we published, if I'm not mistaken, so we have three more years.
Three more years under this.
Under the two eighteen.
We're, we're upside down on that because of the costs of sanitation, is that correct? I mean, why are we so upside down when we just did it two years ago and we projected an eight point five increase? What, what did we, what did we, did we not increase it when we were supposed to and, and now we're paying the price or what's going on with that?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and check, but I don't.
I mean, why is it that we just did it two years ago and we're, we're saying it's not enough?
Well, if anything, that study said we should be increasing it by eight and a half per year.
Yeah.
And it's proving to be really true, um and so that's why we're, if we do what the, the study lint said. We are okay within the five years and so I'd say that one's proving pretty accurate.
But, but you're telling us that we need to go to sixteen point five? If, if, you know, but the tax.
Yeah, I think, I think that one.
So that, that, and that, the first, that, that first two eighteen di- didn't, didn't, we talked about this, about moving that money over was part of the eight point five.
Right.
So something, something's off, something's off there.
So with the original two eighteen for sanitation, so it was basically before a lot of these um inflationary pressures that we had. So we were looking at a base year of twenty twenty one, when that study came forward. And then also, I think, I know we went with the board uh multiple times on C I P, changing some of those, those pieces as well. And I think really those two pieces have caused um more of the need for that fund than the eight and a half. I think the eight and a half would have been, but they had a old skating line at that point, sizes the minimum we need. But also recognizing that there are a lot of pressures that were gonna be coming um with different higher costs, things like that too. Because sanitation is so heavily, you know, dependent on chemicals, things like that, those are a lot of the pressures that have impacted that.
And if you go to the table that was included in board packet, it shows uh only one increase in the last five years. And that was last year, seven point eight percent for a dollar ninety one. We go to very last page of that.
I think it's, I think it's not increasing the rates in the, in what they thought would be the, the scale. So that pause adds pressure to the future years, which is what we're looking at.
Hey Jim, what, what page was that in where, where the rate are?
It's on page four, it's a separate. Yeah, attachment two. It's attachment two to.
Director Nelson, attachment two in the packet? It'd be the last page of that.
Alright, yeah, I, I'm just on the website looking at that. Okay, I'll, I'll take a look, no, no problem, I'll take a look.
So back to the options. Yes, back to the options, so option one um is equivalent of two dollars and percents per, per customer of, of reduced sanitation bill. Option two, um obviously, if you move that to the domestic side, you're looking at the equivalent of a dollar forty four. Of, of reduction um per, per customer, so that would be a five and a half percent increase for next year, that would opt down to a one and a half percent increase. So that's, that's what it does by moving it to, to domestic, but that would require the sanitation to be the sixteen and a half percent. And, and uh, and issuing a two eighteen notice for that if we were to do that this, this year. And then lastly, if we just happen to retain it in east replenishment, um you could uh take our per acre foot rate from about seventy dollars. Which is what it is now, down to about forty one, so a, a little over thirty dollar bigger foot savings. Um and that's uh, that really affects both that fund and domestic, domestic would save a little bit, about fifty cents per customer. Um per month, um but they still have the same impact to sanitation, so it's really, it's really the otherwise much higher impact sanitation. That we're trying to manage hence while still keeping uh rate increases on the east rack side at zero. Um uh while we're doing the, the curtailment. But here, here's the main options and what it does for each fund. So it's, it's really at this stage, whatever board input, trying to wrap up how we wanna close up the budget, it could be really helpful. Um so that we can bring back those, those changes.
Does, does the transfer um from east rack affect any capital, David?
No.
So I mean, you could still keep the money in the east rack and, and not lower the rate.
Yes, you build the reserves, yeah.
Just build the reserves. But you, but you would have a problem in sanitation, because you needed new two eighteen. Well, you wouldn't, you, you wouldn't need this, it this year. If you went to eight point five.
During, during the two eighteen period.
Yeah, during the two teen period, you wouldn't need this year.
Well, we wouldn't need it this year, but we'd need a new two eighteen for sanitation next year at a much higher rate than the eight point five. So I mean, the bene- the benefit. So I mean, the bene- the benefit of keeping it in east rack really is inconsequential. Because there's no reason to build the reserves in the east rack, where there is an opportunity cost if you move it. Out of east and and put it to use, put it to work. Um to avoid a rate increase in sanitation.
Yeah, to that that point, I think one of our goals and objectives has been to actually, you know, reduce the uh reserves. To reasonable levels and and utilize the funds uh in a in a way that uh. You know, minimizes minimizes uh rate increases and minimizes uh exorbitant uh reserves. So seems pretty natural to to move that out of the east rack replenishment. Where where we put it, where we put it would be, you know, I I I'm I'm leaning towards this uh sanitation fund. To keep the um to keep the uh, you know, need for a two eighteen to a minimum in the future. Seems like a reasonable approach.
I I agree. So. From what I see. First of all, great presentation. I'd like to see, I know this is asking for a little more, going forward. To retain the options for no rate increase in domestic account. So go ahead and build your budget with your recommended increases, but also build it with no increases in those two funds. Is that is that doable? I mean, is that is that sustainable? Just because of, it's the unknown factor of. Having these big positive variances at the end of the year and then you're like, well, you know. Guess we didn't need a rate increase after all. And and I and I don't think you needed needed in those funds. Maybe domestic a little more because of the bonding problem in domestic. You know, maybe we can live with the higher potential rate increases in the future.
I think one of the things we need to recall is that the execution rate on the C I Ps is much better than had been historically. I mean, you know, domestic used to be down around seventy percent. It's been over ninety percent the last few years. So there's no, while there is money available, it's not a, it's not a big chunks of money that you may recall from prior years.
And you know, we we don't have the actual for the fiscal twenty three to compare to that. Yeah, I mean, maybe you have, you referred to it earlier, that we have a positive variance. I don't know where that is and what the magnitude of that is.
It's, but it's typical that you see that.
Pretty much over here.
Yeah, and and this it's in the, you see the attachment that has all the actual budget numbers in it. The projections are in the that that document for reference. And so. In that case, we we simply would whatever was executed this year, we budgeted for next year, but we. Essentially are using the reserves from that are being built up this year to cover it next year. That's not a a rate impact.
Get that, but we're always assuming that we do all of that and all new stuff too. And really, that's not the case. It's never the case. How big the. The variance is is.
I can't download the much G M report, it's too big to download on the I T.
So it was on the attachment for days.
Attachment one.
I have such a hard time picking out anything. As soon as I click, it goes away. I'm trying to open that.
Which one is it? You're trying to open.
Think. You'll want to use your mouse that can open it, or is it their mouse that can access? Try pulling it up, yeah. We're still working on some.
Yeah, if you if you go to domestic, I mean, depending on which number you're looking at, we had. Originally a hundred and eighty million budgeted for C I P for domestic and then it went down to one thirty five. But it was all rebudgeted for next year. And so um and probably my biggest highlight really to drive home on the domestic side. Is uh it's really not C I P that's influencing the the rate increase because there's so little O P E G O C I P included. Um it's this is really ongoing operating expenses.
So so if I'm looking at all funds, tell me if I'm crazy here. It looks like about a seventy eight million dollar favorable variance on cash.
Yeah, and that's that's really two two things. That's the rebudgeting uh number of C I P projects in domestic to next year. So it's a one year change. That's an impact rates. And the other one, and the other one is on the state water project. We we uh budgeted for getting more water for the whole year than we did. So that goes into that goes into reserve.
So then you're you're pointing to domestic. It's hard to, because I lose my letters here when I go down. I mean, it still has, I I I can't help but look at cash, because that seems to be the thing that's real. I mean, Euro for twenty eight million dollar favorable variance in domestic. Actual to budget for 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 the time of year. Twenty nine. Twenty nine million dollars. That's just domestic.
Okay, oh, gotcha.
So yeah, we had a budget of thirty three. It's um as of the.
Yeah, so so.
By the way, I like favorable variances, so don't get me wrong. But it's just something we kind of. Because it's like, it seems to be a constant. I know, Rick, I like looking at cash. It just seems more real than all these timing things, which, you know, it's like, well, we'll pick it up this year, but. Yeah, but what what falls from that year to the next year after that? And it seems like there's always. There's always some of that. These are some of the biggest good favorable variances, the cash I've ever seen. Those are big numbers. I mean, I hear what you're saying, you know, believe it or not. I'm probably leaning more towards, because we didn't do a rate increase last year. One for this year, I think, and and seeing how things turn out for next year. For for which fund? For domestic? I think, no, I don't wanna get caught where we we really have to 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 go up and and I kinda like. I I don't, I know a lot a lot of people like to think maybe you raise the rate every year five percent and then the homeowner can. I kinda think we need to go off of off of numbers and kinda where we think they're going. Sometimes it's that instinct on where prices are going. I mean, these are going up. Um that's kind of my thing. Um you know, ever since we've been here, we've been, we've been doing this. Um you've been, you guys have been telling us we need to keep a const content rate increase. You know, three percent or five percent every year for for forever and we'll just stay, we'll just float. Um we haven't really done it that way. We've done two years on, two years off. You know, one year on, one year off kinda thing. So that's that's kinda where I am. I think. Kinda have a problem with you guys taking the money out of punishment uh east rack, just because I think. I've seen the numbers there where it wasn't that long ago, you guys were saying it's gonna go to a hundred and twenty dollar. It's gonna go up high and it may go up high in the future. So I mean, maybe there's a happy medium there. I think Tesla may have a problem with that too. And then the sanitation and everything, I mean, I guess we're gonna. Go. And see what your numbers come up with. I mean, who's in the pudding? I mean.
Well, if I could just recommend on the the east track, I I could tell you sanitation is at now. And we're not expecting uh even a potential rate increase there for. The third year, so a few years out. And revisit it then, and if we wanna look at overall property taxes then, to see um. To see then what the real need is. Um that, yeah, we we reserve all options for the future. So you can move it over now to preserve reserves. On the sanitation side, which otherwise are gonna deplete pretty quick. Um so so that's a concern.
But you can't, you can't move property taxes to the to the east, can we?
Well, there it's it's general property tax, we've allocated to east, and now you're just taking a portion of that and allocating it to sanitation. So.
I reuse some of the general property tax to cover the loan for Oasis project.
Which is paid off this year, so that's why there's the excess.
No, no, he's referring to the.
The levy facility loans.
Bonds loans, same same. It's repayment.
Right, right. But yeah, the. And then remind me from the prior meeting we had, the domestic fund is starting to. They've constructed the mid valley pipeline that will be loaned, we're starting to repay that.
Yes, it's roughly four million a year in income from the west rack.
You probably noticed this, John, one of the cash differences in domestic fund projected over budget is because we had twelve million in penalties. Which we didn't budget for.
But we spent that on conservation.
Yeah, we spent some of it, but that that would make a cash difference. Um I don't necessarily.
You should change your cash.
Did we spend a lot, right? We're actually gonna spend a million more.
Exactly.
There there is, I I feel like I would be remiss if I don't at least stress one point on on domestic in particular. Um which which is fundamentally, there there are no revenues built into the system for ongoing replacement. So, I mean, which is what we're having to issue debt in three years to pay for just a couple of projects on on mainline replacements and what have you. So. The heart of the effort and the the rate increases is building up a capacity to pay for that debt. So if we don't do the rate increases, there's there's really no funding, whether debt or otherwise, to pay for anything if it. Anything material, if it breaks or we need to replace it. All of that would immediately come out of reserves. And there's not that much there if something major breaks, especially as it ages. So whether it's this year or that year problem, just to say, there's there's no funding for the main system.
I understand, except for the reserves. So I think what you're arguing. Is that maybe our reserve target is too low domestic.
I I would, I would definitely say that. I mean, that's what partly what we're gonna bring back to you. With looking at reserve targets and make sure that they make sense.
That's gonna be a tough sell, because we already went through that and we got in trouble before with the numbers so inflated. I mean, John's right when he says that, you know, people look at how much money we have in cash. And we can't always explain that we've got, oh, we need this, we need that. When people see that we have five hundred million and we may be. Going to seven hundred million, they they say things, they they talk to us. And, you know. I understand what you guys are rolling your eyes and I I hear all that, but it's it's a.
I mean, you're comparing it against cities that have like no budget to begin with. I mean, the cities here are relatively small compared to our operations. We've got ten, twenty times the number of employees that some of these cities have. Like, like Desert Water Agency has eighty employees. La Quinta has like forty employees. So it, you can, you can recognize they don't have huge reserves. We're trying to provide varied water services to to a large part of the valley.
I know.
And we wanna be reliable.
We're doing a good job. Based, so based on attachment one, the number, you said five hundred, it it, I mean, it really is, it's gonna be three hundred ninety million at the end of. Of June. That's. It's a pretty healthy number in my hands. I know, you know, it's spread across various funds and you can't use it for one or the other, but. I don't know. I'd like to keep those up, those two options in. I I think, I like, overall, I think they're really well reasoned. Uh recommendations.
What do we need to give you to get to lean one or the other?
Well, it's April seventeenth and we have two months. Uh you know, I I don't know. I I think leaning is the what's what's affecting my judgment. I mean, I'm one of five, right? More than anything is is the assigned reserves in those two funds.
So we need to spend those down in the next two months. Is that what you're saying?
I mean, it's it's that interplay, Jim, between being responsible to our customers with rates. And and uh, you know, in providing the services and 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 when I look at the. Those two budgets in pre-cutter canal and domestic, we're able to do that without a rate increase, at least one more year. I mean. But again, this is, this is the same, you know, those hockey stick graphs that we see. Well, if you don't do it now, it's gonna go way up. And it never does. And so. You know, I mean, I've only, Peter's been here longer than I have. I've only been doing this for twelve years, for fourteen or whatever it is. But uh but it's the same thing every year.
I I would agree with that, John. I mean, I I, you know, I've seen the five year projections and, you know, they're 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 very dire and and. And and so I agree with your skepticism. I think I think. One of, as I'm thinking about it, is one of the things that we see different is we have already issued um a fair amount of debt. And we're we're looking at uh, you know, acquiring some more debt. Uh and so it 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 does create just a little bit different paradigm. So uh we need to be thoughtful about that as well.
And, you know, as an operator, I feel extremely responsible to you and the customer. To have adequate financial resources to cover what I can't project. As a failure, as an interruptible support service issue. And I can't do that if we drive reserves down just to avoid a two dollar rate increase. I mean, to me, that is a, that is a much larger risk than saying, well, let's just kick it off for one more year and what would happen.
I'm not suggesting we drive the reserves down.
Well, I'm kinda getting mixed messages.
Below the target.
Well, but even the targets.
Well, then the target is too low. I mean, that's that's where maybe we need to revisit that, but. I'm not saying they are, but I but I'm hearing from staff is that we need to take another look at these reserves, because they're too low.
Well, we lowered them because the board wanted us to, because they thought they were too high.
Because of the aggregate problem.
So you can always drive the reserves down, but then you don't have the flexibility responding to issues when they come up.
No, we've been responsible, I mean, you know, I. Would we be? You know, I mean, I s- you can't help but think of the tell of everything. I mean, that's the big, that was the big oogeyman, right? If something like that happens. And and it and it has happened. I mean, now we have to go spend tens of millions of dollars replacing relatively. And uh and and so we're doing that. I mean, it's, that's a kind of a worst case scenario.
We're not doing that, though.
We're not doing it fast enough.
Well, we're not doing it because we do not have a funding source. That is part of that list of maybe nine million dollars.
But we're phasing, we're phasing that.
But we can't even, we we've done one phase and there's five phases. We've done one phase in San City, there's ten phases. We can't do any more unless we get bonds. That was part of that ninety nine million dollar bond issuance list that that we skimmed over in twenty minutes. In the C I P study session.
I have right here.
So we cannot do those projects, because we do not have a funding source.
Phasing on the 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 face of of phasing on those pipe replacements is too slow.
It's been delayed.
It's been delayed. We don't have.
Still, still, so we're not doing anything.
Not doing anything, no.
Last time we did something other.
Uh when we did that small phase.
Yeah, we did a phase three day, three years ago, but we promised those customers.
Yeah, we did a phase three, eight, three years ago, but we promised those customers a ten million a year capital replacement. Every year for ten years, we've done one in five years, so I think, you know, those customers that have been there twenty years are struggling. And, you know, we've been lucky, not gonna, we haven't had any additional corrosion issues, but it, it's coming, so I think his whole point on.
I mean, that's, that's the one that's coming in.
Yeah, and Talavera, those two, the other, those are the only two that I know of.
What's the other, Talavera and?
Sun City.
Sun City.
Oh, Sun City, okay.
They're, they're a hundred fifty or plus combined.
Yes.
But at five point five percent.
That's a bad one.
Five point five percent rate increase here doesn't alleviate that.
Cause that only gives you five million and each phase is at least ten million, for, that, that's just for Sun City.
It's a set of position where we can be, be in a better position for bond rating.
Right, it gives you some bond capacity to afford, I think we're doing thirty million total for domestic.
Right.
Out of the ninety-nine, and over time, as you pay that down, you issue more bonds and at least make progress.
With the increase.
With the increase, yeah, it gives you a little bit of capacity to afford some debt to pay for projects like this. But even then, that's for the most part a glacial pace, but at least it's a pace.
It's a known deficiency that we're not addressing.
Yeah, and so, right, and we have some failures, we've obviously had some failures out there.
Well, John, I mean, I'm open to hearing, you know, other alternative modifications to these three options. But I think based on what I've heard today and what I've seen and what our future objectives are. You know, I, I would be inclined to wanna just stick with option one, I mean, I, I'm amazed that we've been able to put together a budget. That has a net of only one position and a, a, an increase in overall cost that's below the national CPI number. So I'd be glad to, A, you've done a great job, all of you have done a great job, and, and B, you know, I'm open to other data. But I'm not sure that would change the direction I'd wanna go in.
So, so, yeah, appreciate that, on this presentation we had on debt, which I thought was really you needed, this is great. I'm looking at for domestic, you know, proposed additional debt funded products. You have Sun City at about thirteen and a half million and Talavera at about eight point two million. This, this is five, these are five-year numbers.
Yes, that's the total amount in the.
So you're saying you're just not asking for what you really want there? What's the real number?
Well, if. I mean, we obviously have started out over time, but if we could do a phase every year, it's fifteen million a year. Ten, uh, approximately fifteen to, I mean, it's probably more now, it's probably more like twenty.
This, this is only twenty, say twenty-two million in five years.
I know, that's.
And that's in the ninety-nine million dollar number.
Yeah, otherwise, your five-year would have us with no cash and if we actually put that in, you know. And so it's the only way to try and manage the, the whole, the whole thing.
We're, we're doing a project this year that's carrying over into next year called Adams Street and Transmission Main. That's the piece that had that very large hole, the corrosion.
Well, maybe that's what I'm thinking.
And that, that's.
Part of the same, it's just.
It's not part of the ninety-nine million, it's an eleven million dollar project, and we are using unassigned reserves for that project.
So the Adams listed here is five and a half million.
It was to pay back what we're spending this year.
We have to go up ten percent a year for the next ten years to pay for that. Well, what I'm hearing, yeah, it's the ninety-nine million, we really need a hundred and fifty million.
Ninety-nine million is, is for all funds, it's not just for domestic.
I understand that, but.
But yeah, for domestic.
What's missing in, in the pipe replacement pro- projects is about fifty million, say thirty million, cause you already got twenty in there. Not really, you said fifteen a year.
Yeah, uh, uh, and that was, that's probably old numbers, so ten for Sun City, five for Talavera.
So maybe there is fifty million missing out of the ninety-nine.
But all of that ninety-nine's not dedicated to domestic.
Yeah, sanitation, stormwater. That might help, Jim, for asking.
So only five point five percent?
That's on the domestic side. That doesn't solve the problem, but it, but it does put you in a position supposedly that'll help our bond rate, which is gonna be important.
That's, that's the, I, I, I get that I'm inheriting. But what's uh, might be perceived as crying wolf for, for years, and I can only, I've looked at the numbers, but the. The, the fundamental problem with domestic is if we don't raise rates, you can't really issue bonds. And if you can't issue bonds, cause they're way too expensive, then the only option you have then is either PEGO funding, which we don't have. Uh, or reserves, and, and, and these kind, that's one section of the system. Um, if that actually became a, a, a prevalent thing that needed to be responded to quickly. You could drain down your entire reserves within a number of years if you felt we had to respond, and, and so that's, that's a risk, is. So I don't have the presentation. I don't know where I'm at here.
So we are, uh, almost thirty minutes over.
I'm all right, I'm still just the one that could help it, not domestic, as far as the zero option.
It's, we're at the end. Yeah, so, so I'll, I'll, if, if I take this as direction, the final budget would reflect the. Five and a half on domestic, uh, eight and a half on sanitation, zero increase in canal, uh, essentially option one.
Two, two options on.
Okay, two options. No, it's relatively easy to, we'll show. Um, and then the, the next steps where we bring back support project and detail reserves and detail. Obviously, this, this change, and then we can look at adoption.
Great gentleman, uh, we have no other business.
Hey, uh, Jim, I'd just like to, I'm gonna, um, this, I think this is the first meeting with the Zoom uh, technology in the Romans room. And it has worked exceptionally well, uh, I can hear everything that's going on. Uh, I can see in very different camera angles, look fantastic, and so appreciate all the effort in that regard.
Thanks for your support, sir.
Yeah, what you can't do is that your head is jacked up. Back up now. That's better.
Thank you, guys.